Hello, everyone. Maybe? Am I on? Hello, everyone. Welcome to our board meeting tonight. We'll get things started by calling the meeting in order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Eckert?
Here.
Mr. Franco?
Here.
Mrs. Goebel?
Here.
Mr. Greenlee?
Here.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Farr?
Here.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yeah, here. I'll let the record show that prior to tonight's board meeting, we had an executive session to review the annual review of safety and security protocol as required by PDE and to discuss personnel matters related to specific staff. With that, do we have any superintendent remarks?
We do. Good evening, Board and Tiger community. I always appreciate the opportunity to share a few comments. I'm gonna do my very best tonight. I had an unplanned dental surgery this afternoon, which was not the most pleasant experience, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try my best. I'd like to start by welcoming back our solicitor, Attorney John Audi. John had a significant health issue a few months back, and we're very happy to welcome him back for his first public appearance, back and healthy, so welcome back to Tuncanic. As we, as I shared last month, we are projecting a pretty large multimillion dollar deficit for next year's budget. I'm not, I'm not looking forward to the serious and difficult conversations about staffing and student programs and student services that are gonna happen over the next month. But on May 6th, I spent the day in Harrisburg advocating for our school district. I spent the day speaking with legislators, sharing our story and sharing our challenges and asking them to prioritize rural school districts. You know, as I shared last month, as I also shared last month, that I just don't believe the governor's proposed budget is fair to smaller rural Republican school districts, and I'm, I'm hopeful that our local legislators and other legislators from around the state will come together to fight for a district like ours. I'll give a more detailed update when we get to the budget update in the agenda. Last evening, great evening, we celebrated many, many members of our senior class at our annual Senior Community Awards Night. During the evening, I think a hundred scholarships, I think it was a hundred on the, on the dot. I think there was a hundred scholarships that were awarded and totaled hundreds of thousands of dollars. Mr. Winsec, did we have a total? It was a lot. It was a lot. Like, one young man himself on the stage was holding a giant $200,000 check last evening. So there was a ton of money that was awarded to our seniors last night. I'd like to congratulate our scholarship recipients and thank our generous community for supporting these awards. Next Tuesday, which is May 20th, our top-ranked softball team will host a home playoff game in the first round of the PIAA District 2 playoffs. Let's encourage our entire community to come and to cheer on our Tigers. Let's show up in orange and black and create a really electric environment for our girls. Next Wednesday, May 21st, and I'm really proud about this, our district will host our annual Fun Day event. On Fun Day, it's really a great event. We will host students with special needs from many local school districts, you know, surrounding school districts, for a very fun-filled day at our stadium. And I'd like to recognize Assistant Special Education Director Deb Sherman and our special education staff for organizing and running this really high-quality event. I can't believe I'm gonna say this, but the, by the time we come together for the June board meeting, the school year will be over. In fact, there are only 14 days of school remaining, and we still have a lot of end-of-the-year events left, and I'm encouraging parents and grandparents to check with their child's school for all upcoming events. And I'm gonna throw this out there, at 7 o'clock on Friday, June 6th, that's graduation. So our graduation ceremony will be held, just like in years past, for, in our stadium, and I want our entire community to attend this year's ceremony to celebrate this very dynamic senior class. I mean, this is a very special group of kids. And, and finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, as the year comes to a close, I'd like to thank, number one, I'd like to thank our students for their focus. We have great students in this school district. I'd like to thank our parents for their support, our staff for their dedication to the students of Tuncanic, and our very caring school board. You know, we had another really outstanding school year due to hard-working, focused students, great families support, high-quality staff, and a school board that always puts the needs of our students first. So congratulations on the great school year. Thank you, Board, and I always appreciate the opportunity to speak for a couple minutes.
Thank you. I just want to mention that, that whole part about 14 days of school and graduation was needlessly cruel to those of us who have seniors graduating this year, and it has gone a little too fast for us, so. And also, just a reminder to the, the community and to senior families that, as with past years, if there is a reason that we cannot have graduation that night for terrible weather or whatever, I will be bumped to the next evening. I know I've gotten a few messages about that this week, so that is how we try to do things. We do everything possible to avoid having to bring it inside because that just limits who can be here to celebrate, so. Two years ago, we ended up starting like an hour late because of thunderstorms, but we still got it in, so having graduation outside is a priority. All right, moving along, we will have our first public comment session. Public comment is limited to four minutes per person for each comment period. The first one is now on agenda items only. The second one on non-agenda items or any other item is at the end of the meeting. Please come to the podium and state your name and your municipality. You don't have to give your address, just your municipality. And public comment is open to staff, students, parents, taxpayers of the Tuncanic School District. With that, do we have any public comment on agenda items only? All right, seeing none, we'll move along. We have, the enrollments are there for everybody's information in our buildings. Any comment on enrollment?
Down 50 again this year, so it's like clockwork, it's 50 to 75 every year.
And to, there has been some comments out in the community that that it has something to do with the school and it, it doesn't. It has to do with the, the demographics of our community. We don't have a lot of young families moving into the area. There's fewer booms happening as far as like manufacturing, bringing in tons of new families to, to move into the area, and our population is aging in our community, the average age, as well as the family sizes. When I graduated from here in 2000, it was very common to have families that had five or six kids, and that isn't necessarily the case anymore. So this has been a trend that has started around the 90s and has been very consistent throughout the last, yeah, 25 years.
It's a, it's a trend. I mean, it's, today we met with the new Wyoming County Human Services Director, Haley Townsley, and her concern, her number-one priority is like affordable housing, because she's saying, number one, there's not a ton of housing available for, for families, and then the housing that is available is very expensive right now. So that's something that I know they're looking at very, you know, that's their priority.
But when you look at some of the new development in, in the community, you know, personal care homes, aging communities, and, and even at Shadowbrook, which is a, a great resource for that community in our, our area, but that's not something that there was a need for that was recognized 15 years ago.
I think I just read in the paper that there's another senior housing complex coming.
They don't have kids.
And they don't have, well, I mean, they don't have kids unless they're raising their grandkids, right? We do have a lot of grandparents doing that in our community, but. All right. If I, if there are no other comments on enrollment, we can move along to the approval of minutes. We have the minutes there from the April 10th meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion. I think I heard a second motion at the same time.
Second.
Okay, that was Paula. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goebel?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. Moving along to business and finance, do we have a motion to approve the business and finance report?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goebel?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. Superintendent's report.
I would like to ask for a motion to approve the personnel report as presented. I am gonna make a change on the floor. I'm gonna ask that we remove Brooke Kearns from the support staff job classification change for the interim. That may need to be revisited next month. The association had some concerns with that, and I have zero concerns with it. I think we are well within the contract, and Mrs., Mrs. Kearns wants the position, so I will work that out with the association, and I hope to bring this back again next month, but I would like a motion to approve the personnel report with Mrs. Kearns removed.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve with corrections?
Thank you. Any discussion?
Sorry to see Mr. Craig leaving. Glad you're here. Wish you the best.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Kinda. You know, just saying.
They don't want me too enthusiastic.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Goebel?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Outstanding.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
And I would like to congratulate Dr. Craig. He will be leaving us, which is very sad for us. He'll be leaving us at the end of June. He has taken an administrative position in the Wilkes-Barre Area School District. We certainly wish him well. I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. Craig a few times throughout my career, and he's the ultimate professional. I, I will say that about him, and he will definitely be missed. The next item up for me is a motion to approve conference attendance as presented.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goebel?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
The, what's nice is Mr. Bevan's training there. That is for the AP Institute, so that's the final step to adding AP psychology to our, to our curriculum. That's, that's a huge one. I think we're gonna have 14 AP offerings at the high school next year.
That's great.
All right, moving along, we have committee reports. Have we had any committee meetings, or do we need to schedule any in the next four weeks?
We will be scheduling a Building and Grounds Committee meeting before the next board meeting in June at 5:30, and the topic will, there may only be one topic, and that'll be our potential solar project.
So that is literally the date of the next board meeting. There will also be.
Correct. So it'll be 5:30, and then the board meeting will be at 7:00.
Like Superintendent Doherty, I spent Tuesday of this week in Harrisburg advocating on behalf of our school district and other school districts, talking about the need for money that is equitably distributed so that bigger schools like Wilkes-Barre can stop stealing our staff. But, um, no, we, it was a great day. We got to meet with a lot of interesting people that hear what we're talking about. I would also put the request out to our bus-driving contractors to be reaching out to our state legislators about the funding formula for transportation, because that is something that, you know, I believe it hasn't been updated since the 70s, and they're struggling, and they, they would like us to pay some more money, and we would like to see that adjusted from the state rather than just our local taxpayers having to cover that. That's not to say we're not gonna work something out with our bus drivers, but just a reminder, I'd asked about that in the committee meeting, and the local legislators that I talked to this week have not heard anything from any of our busing contractors yet, is my understanding. So reach out about that, and also, one thing that doesn't cost any extra money to anybody in our community or the state is to get some kind of a cyber reform. Not that we would get rid of cyber charters. They are valuable, they help a lot of families, but right now, every school district in the state pays a different amount from the, from each other. And school districts that have higher costs due to more expenses are paying more for the same education than a student from a district that maybe is more in the city so that they can keep their costs down because they're packing their classrooms with 30 kids in a kindergarten class. So that, that would be a big thing because that doesn't require any more money to come out of the state, that doesn't require any more money to come out of the taxpayers, and it could increase, it could really help close up a big part of our, our budget problems in our district if they had some fair cyber charter funding reform for our state. So it was a good day, and I encourage everybody to be active in advocating for your local schools and not have it fall back on our local community every time.
So, so Mr. Doherty's gonna go through that budget deficit, but that, I mean, that's really the gap in our, our budget is about the size of our cyber charter payments.
That's correct.
So they're pretty similar, and so if there was some amount of reform, you could literally close half of that gap with some action by the state.
There's a Republican push now. There's a bill that's being brought to the floor in Harrisburg that if a district runs their own cyber charter, then the outside cyber charter school can't charge more than what it costs to run internally.
That would be fantastic.
It would save us $2.7 million.
Right.
So I don't know if that'll pick up steam, but I'm interested, like, that was not what was being discussed, and that would be ideal.
That's even more, that's even better than you could.
That's correct. That's correct.
Anything would be helpful.
Right.
So if they could pass anything that brings a more standardized cost to that.
Yep.
You know, some of the larger cyber charters, as one in particular, have $500 million, half a billion dollars in their fund balance.
The biggest expense for CCA last year was land acquisition. Figure that out.
For a cyber school.
For a cyber school.
All right. If there's nothing else on the committee reports, we'll move along to the unfinished business of the budget update for '25, '26.
So as I, as I stated, we're, we're facing a pretty significant budget shortfall this year. Over the past month, my team and I really worked diligently trying to close the deficit gap, and I'm confident that already, just in a month, we have taken it from $3 million down to about a $2.4, $2.5 million deficit. You know, hard decisions are being made, though. Like, nothing is, is easy about this, and, and much harder decisions are on the horizon. I mean, it's just a matter of time, and I know we've spoken about this before as a board, that the only options before us will be, you know, increasing class sizes and cutting student programs. You know, we've, we've done a lot of work on our budget through attrition of staff, and we are getting to the point that we're not gonna be able to reduce many more. And, but I think that, you know, we will continue to look at it as our enrollment declines. You know, I think we've done a fairly good job downsizing through attrition, but that will get to the point that it's no longer available. You know, as I stated, I was in Harrisburg on, on March 6th, and let me tell you, I find it so easy to talk about our school district. I love our school district. I believe in so much that we do. We offer great things, and I love to, you know, talk about those things, and we all want those things to stay. So when I was speaking to legislators, I was asking for consideration about cyber charter school reform, transportation formula reform, how, right now, the governor's proposal basically flatlines basic education funding and special education funding, and how rural school districts are being hammered by the governor's proposed budget. And here's an example of what I'm talking about. It's proposed that, there's 500 school districts in Pennsylvania. It's proposed that 150, basically small rural school districts, will split 3% of the entire state education money. The remaining 350 school districts will split 97% of all funding. It, rural schools aren't gonna survive with that kind of focus coming out of the governor's office, you know, regarding the cyber charters, which we just talked about. Last year, we paid approximately $3 million, and I'm giving you very rough numbers, but $3 million to educate 120 cyber charter school students. That's 10 mils of taxes. Out of the 82 mils that we have, 10 mils goes directly to outside cyber charter schools. In our own in-house cyber program, which we call Fusion C3, and we're doing some very unique things within that. We're allowing students to hybrid, to, to do some online courses, and then to come in for red tile, and we're doing some creative things with it. But we have 84 students assigned to our cyber charter at a cost of approximately $290,000. Why was the state, why would the state ever allow cyber charter schools to charge us 10 times the amount of what it costs for us to provide the same service? It's absolutely ridiculous and completely unfair to taxpayers. You know, the priority, as I see it, the priority from the governor's education budget is obviously urban school districts. They are proposed to get millions and millions of dollars, of additional dollars. I mean, there's schools in IU 18 and 19 that are getting an additional $13, $15 million next year. We're getting $90,000 as an addition. I'm gonna put that in perspective. Our healthcare costs have increased over $700,000. Essentially, urban school districts now are being funded at the expense of smaller rural school districts. You know, the message from Harrisburg is, it's very clear that they want rural school districts to stop relying on the state and to start relying on local taxpayers. I mean, I don't see how anybody could interpret that any differently. You know, two remaining things that I'd like to share. First, we received and calculated this year's Farmstead Homestead exclusion, exemption. Again, this year, the average household in Wyoming County will receive an additional tax credit equivalent to two mils. Between last year and this year, that is the equivalent tax credit of four mils has been provided to the average Wyoming County household. And second, you know, we're very fortunate that we have a healthy fund balance. Okay, but that's the kind of thing, if we start using that to make payroll, it'll be gone within a year. As a team, and I, and I include the board in this, as a team, we have a focus on wise spending and on saving money. And, you know, my plan, and I've discussed this publicly before, is to utilize that money to renovate a school building. You know, the state no longer provides Plan Con money. The state no longer provides money to, like, build a school or to renovate a school. That, that solely gets put on local school districts. We have two schools, this being one of them, that's, that are 50 years old. We have to have a plan to modernize, renovate, maintain, and that, that's what I would like to see happen with our fund balance. I would love to see, you know, a school, significant renovations. You know, and the, the last thing I'm gonna say is unfortunately, I was disappointed to hear, and I hope I'm wrong, but I was disappointed to hear that we had a community member reach out to some of our local legislators stating that our district doesn't have a need for any more funding. And quite frankly, that's completely inaccurate and, and very, very short-sighted. You know, expenses are up everywhere, everywhere. You know, we all see it. We all see it every day. Our school district is not immune from those same increased expenses, and if the state doesn't wanna do their part and properly fund basic education and special education formulas and finally tackle the ridiculous cost of cyber charter schools, you know, it's all gonna end up being placed on our local community, on local taxpayers, and, and it's just not right. You know, I'm asking everyone, our entire community, reach out to our state reps and senators, because I'm telling you, our local state, state reps and senators are good to us. They're friendly, they were receptive to the message from me, I think they were receptive to the message from Holly, and they see the need. Reach out to them, ask them to, to support some kind of cyber charter reform, ask them to advocate for rural schools, and, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful for the future, but I'm concerned about, you know, this upcoming budget year. Thank you very much. I hope that provides a, a pretty good update as where we're at.
Any other discussion on the budget update from our board? So as a reminder, we'll be voting on a budget at the June meeting, and hopefully we have more guidance from the state as to what our funding from the state will look like at that time.
Dr. Supan or Paula, for, for that budget discussion, could you make sure, prior to that, could you send out the contractual increase in terms of dollars per year?
Sure.
As well as what that equates to mils, so the board at least understands, like, we just don't have any choices on these until a contract gets renegotiated.
No, our.
I think we have that, it's just I'm gonna dig that up.
Abs, I absolutely will. We, I have that, I'll make sure it's exact. We have that. That was factored in last month when we did our initial, our, our proposed. The $3 million, there's not one wish list item on it. It is all fixed cost items. But we, I'll make sure that it's highly detailed for, not only for the board, but also for the.
Yeah, we almost have to break healthcare out, like, is, is that, that, you know, that's gonna be what it's gonna be, but I'd like to see, you know, wage increases for, for what that equates to dollars, and then we can have healthcare as a separate line item.
Correct. And like, right, absolutely, I'll do all that. Like, I know Piers is about a quarter million dollars, the state retirement has, has jumped above.
So that's one mil right there, like, those things we gotta add them in.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comments on that item, we'll move along to the new business. Informational documents are there, the right-to-know lists for '24, '25 school year, the T- the TASD Visa account, and the summary of the teacher substitute bill rates. Is there any discussion about any of those items? Seeing none, we'll go to the appointment of a school board treasurer. This one always just sneaks right up on us. So we need to approve a school board treasurer to serve a one-year term from July 1st of '25 to June 30th of '26. Do I hear any nominations for a school board treasurer?
I nominate John Burke.
Shocking. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Oh, we have a second.
Thank you, guys.
Is there any discussion on sentencing John Burke to another year as school board treasurer?
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
My pleasure.
Hearing none, can we get a roll call, please?
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblatt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. Gladly, with enthusiasm. Thank you, John.
I'm here anyway.
Yeah.
All right, item C, the bus and van contracts. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion about bus and van contracts? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblatt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Item D, the discussion about a possible increase in compensation for busing contractors.
I'm, I'm going to defer to Dr. Supan to talk about this. I just want to say that, you know, I want to thank our transportation contractors, our busing contractors, and Dr. Supan and our Transportation Director, Karen Delancy. They've, they've met a couple times, and they've had some really positive discussions. And I think we have a plan that we will be ready to present to the board for consideration in June as part of our budget discussions. But I'm going to let him talk about what it is. And I think we did a fair job, I want to say, trying to provide, or at least recommend what, what exactly they were asking for. So I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Supan. Yeah, we met twice. We met a couple weeks ago again, really good conversations. The first time we met with all the contractors, it was, it was a really positive conversation. They had about two hours in the room together. We gave them that central office to kind of come together and figure out what they want, because we were getting a lot of different things, a lot of different requests. Some wanted capacity pay, some wanted others. So they came to us and they requested full capacity pay. So we would report actuals, and then, then we would budget and pay whatever the capacity of bus would be to get them to 100. And they wanted 10 cents on the cost index formula. And that would cost the district 195,696.48 if we did that. We would reduce busing to be efficient with our bus numbers, because we did have buses running with under 30 kids on 72, 76, 78 passenger buses, which we just can't do. We have fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayer. Along with that, we would continue to cover the gas cost. It, it's roughly, the, the tax exempt, we would do the tax exempt, then pull out of their, their, their checks that we pay back. So they'll get the tax exempt gas, but that's a roughly 60,000 a bus. We would continue to maintain the radios to link up to our towers. So we would continue to take that cost. We would equip every single bus on our current fleet with a camera, and their backups would have cameras. After that, we would not do anything with the cameras. John Chapulski, who's been going around updating all the firmware and the cameras to make sure they're working efficiently. I think he has a couple buses left, he told me yesterday, but he's close to being done with the firmware updates and the cameras. We also purchased ProVision card readers to go in with the cameras. At some point in the past, before me, and that's not pointing the finger, there were just different cards purchased, and that was part of the problem. ProVision told us with the cards not reading sometimes, also with people putting the cards in back correctly. There's a couple different things. But we did buy the right cards to be able to support the drivers moving forward with the ProVision cards. So that's kind of where we're at right now. They did ask for a guaranteed 180-day pay. We didn't feel that was appropriate to subsidize taxpayer money on, and pay when there's no expense that day or nothing's running that day. They will still get three out of five FID days covered, which we agreed to a couple years ago, two, three years ago. That's still in play. And that's kind of where we're at right now. We, we just need to know that we still have the gas cap in effect with propane, propane, gas, diesel, so there's still a cap there that's still in play. We haven't come near those numbers. We used to do.
Years.
We used to do quarterly checks, like, two years ago when COVID was still kind of going on. And tax, the gas prices were increasing, but we haven't done that a while. And if we want to keep it, we can, or it's up to the board. But that's still in play is the, the gas cap, propane cap, diesel cap. And, and that's kind of where we're at right now. So the plan overall, again, with all those other things, the cost at 100%, 100% capacity and 10 cents on the index would be 195,696.48. And our plan right now, as the administration, is to bring that to the board for a vote in June for your consideration. So I, I don't expect, I mean, obviously, I'm open to any feedback, and we're open to any feedback you'd like to provide. But, you know, just seeing this information and not really processing it, I mean, certainly, we could have a larger discussion around what we want to do with it. I do think our contractors do an outstanding job making sure our kids get to school safe and get home safe. But I'm going to also point out that this is, you know, if we increase expenses, we have to increase revenue. So the revenue's got to come from somewhere. I will point that out, but this will be up for a vote as presented, unless someone would like it modified. But this will be up as presented this evening for a vote for the board in June.
If we're going to be paying, we're looking at considering full capacity. We need to limit the size of the bus.
I just wrote that down. We're going to have to cap the size. We don't, yeah.
We've got some at 72, and some at 78, and some at 77.
Correct.
So we have to figure out.
And we did talk, depending on what the board decides to do with the vote, then we would have to go and restructure our contracts that they sign annually with our solicitor to make sure we have the right language there, and bus capacity cap would be in there.
I mean, because bus operator could make way out and buy a, the next new bus they could get, get a larger bus, and they're getting higher revenue then.
Right. We don't, we don't want to put 84-seat buses on the road.
Thank you for doing that work.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other discussion on that? Okay. Moving along, item D or E, the approval of overnight out-of-state field trips. So this will be the FBLA going to Nationals in Anaheim, correct?
Yes, it is, Anaheim, California. We had six students in our FBLA qualify for the national championships in Anaheim, California, and we're going to figure out how to get them there. We're not going to take that opportunity away from the kids. We do have two staff members that'll be going, and six kids have committed to going. So we'll figure out a way to fund it, and we'll get them there.
Four, and I think it said on there that some of it was covered by the trip, the program sponsor.
Yeah.
Or is that us?
I'll defer to Dr. Supan by that. But we did have money set aside that we had gotten from Cotera for items like this.
Like this.
That's what I was going to say. We have the Cotera 25,000 dollar match, and then the shopping stone was also nice enough to put another 50,000 dollars in there. So we do have some money set aside. Yeah. But it's important. We did have six kids qualified, but we only have four attending. But it's important that if they want to go, we'll make sure they go.
That's exciting. Do we have any other, do we have a motion?
How is that compared to other years? That's our curiosity. Do we know?
I didn't, I didn't hear the question.
How often, like, how does that compare to our performance in other years? Like, is this?
The number of kids going.
Uh, Mr. Winsec's giving us the thumbs up that it's higher, right?
It's higher this year, yes.
I think last year, we had two that went to Florida that competed.
I think we had three qualify that went.
Yes, last year. And I think this year, we had six qualify.
Six qualify for here.
Right.
It's difficult because it's, 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 it goes out of vacation plans, so.
Yes.
Right.
And it's California.
And it's California.
All right. Any, do we have a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have Global, and do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblatt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Item F, the approval of the 2025 proposed additions to the English Department's book list. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Oh, I would like to say a lot of these books are really, really good. I'm, like, looking through the list.
The list is highly vetted.
Yes, the list was highly vetted.
I'm surprised that some of those aren't already on.
I know, I read some of them when I was in high school, so.
I mean, Mark Twain and Edgar Allan Poe, I mean, it's not like it's something out of blue.
Animal Farm, like, it's, it's been a while, I guess, since we've given those, given the kids that kind of PTSD. I, I say that jokingly.
Don't make me.
William Shakespeare? I know I had that.
All right, and do we have any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblatt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Item G, the change of flex spending vendor from CBIZ to OCA and approval of an agreement with OCA.
I, I just want to point out, Cades Marcolis, who is our 403B provider, they have switched to OCA, and we're just doing it for ease. And it actually saves us 75 cents per participant by doing that.
Okay. Any other discussion? I need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
How efficient. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblatt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Item H, approval of a '25, '26 service contract with PSBA for better unemployment compensation system. I'm going to abstain from this. I don't believe that I'm required to because it's a separate entity. But I, for full disclosure, I am on the governing board for PSBA for the state. So that being said, I had nothing to do with this discussion.
I will point out before a motion is made, this is a renewal. This is not a new contract.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Goldblatt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arnold?
Abstain. Item I, an approval of an agreement with Total Grant Solutions. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
All right, ask me a question. Ask me a question.
Contract.
This, this company is working with local schools. They're very big in IU 18 and 19. Basically, they're a grant-writing service. They lobby on behalf of those grants. And they're like a consulting firm. I'm just going to give you some examples. So this, we'd be, we'd be committing to a two-year contract at $2,000 a month, so a total of 48,000. But I just want to point out, in the last, in the last two years, now, some of these school districts have been with them for one year, some with two. But for the same price, Hanover has received 500,000 dollars from their services. Nanokok has received 250,000. Pittston Area has received 1.2 million. Wookspara CTC has received a million dollars in grants. Wyoming Area has received 250,000 dollars. In IU 19, Dunmore's working with them, has received 500,000 dollars. Abington Heights has received 990,000 dollars. Carbondale, 500,000. Forest City, 255,000, and Mid Valley, a million dollars. This company in the surrounding districts and talking to my colleagues has really shown value in helping not only write the grants, but then working the halls in Harrisburg to get the grants. They're really advocating and lobbying on behalf. If they're going to bring us money, I, I'm not going to look away.
I could add too, like, we signed to other grant-writing companies, and their take on their work is much cheaper for the district than other, than any company.
Right. Because we had looked at, we had been in a contractor or something with another company that they didn't charge us anything unless they got something, but that if they got something, they charged us quite a bit of what we got.
Quite a bit. But what we found is we also weren't prioritized because we weren't big enough.
Right.
You know, some of those companies, they work for very large school districts that have a more diverse population or a poorer population, which is basically an easier pickup for grants. I mean, and we got pushed on the back burner with that, and it was, it was obvious. I, I think this is probably a good investment for us.
Nobody who's used them so far that we're aware of has gone upside down in this.
No, no.
Everybody has come out ahead.
You don't know anything unless they get you something again, so. The, the company itself, the person I met with, I was like, what's the least amount you've gotten a school district in a year? And they said 200,000 dollars. And, but like, that being said, that's someone talking to me from the company. So I was like, I need a list of all the school districts that you're working with locally. And I got 10, and it seems to be substantiated, you know, what they said.
Okay, any, do we need a motion?
How long is the agreement for?
Two years.
Two years.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblatt?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Moving along to item J, the approval of the MOU, or, I'm sorry, memorandum of agreement with the Airherring Center as presented. Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
This is solely if we need the services. There are no students currently there.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblatt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Item K, donation of an air hockey table to the IC by community member Heather M. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblatt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlee?
Yes.[1669.61]
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
The last item, the appointment for the delegate assembly, so I believe that we would have gotten two members that could have gone. What this is, is the platform for PSBA of what the membership wants, PSBA's, not lobbyists, but advocates in Harrisburg to push for school districts in the state. That legislative platform is set by the people who are on the school boards that are members of PSBA. So every year, you get to have, depending on the size of your district and things like that, a certain number of people who can go and weigh in on what that platform should say. People submit different recommendations, for example, there's always one every year from a school down near Philly somewhere that says, "We need to advocate for sensible gun control" as it applies to schools, and every year, it doesn't get pushed because PSBA, like, the goal is to not be political, like, we're supposed to be looking at, you know, improving education. So I say this, that we have the opportunity from our district to have two. I've been going most years, with the exception of COVID years, since I joined the board, but my understanding is that there wasn't anybody else who was interested this year, but next year, you know, if this sounds like something you're interested in, then write back to Carol when she sends out that email saying, "Hey, yeah, I think that might be cool to go check out." So the nice thing is that ever since COVID, they've been doing a hybrid delegate assembly on a Saturday in November, and they're going back to having it in conjunction with the conference this year. So it would be a day that if you're going to the conference, you'd already be there. So with all that said, do we have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any other discussion?
Am I buying votes?
Am I buying votes?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so many. Okay, with no other discussion, we can have a roll call.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard? Mrs. Eckard?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblatt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenly?
Yes.
Dr. O'Sherick?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
All right. Lastly, we have additional public comments, so if anybody has any public comments on agenda items or non-agenda items, please come up to the podium, you have four minutes, and please state your name and your municipality.
Well, y'all know Wyoming, I just wasn't here last month because I had a death in the family.
Sorry to hear that.
But I'm a little behind, but some of the passed ones that have passed away that were here was Lori, Mrs. Borgensen, who was in high school custodian, Patty Dibble, who was one fantastic teacher, and Carol Scranton, who was custodian. Now, I'm going to push again for Rachel's challenge, because I just had an incident come to my family that this needs to be, and I see it in other schools and what they're doing. I almost lost a granddaughter. She got a hold of some odd medicine, not overdose, but she was taken to a hospital, and she was transferred to the University of North Carolina where she spent over a week. Her heart raced so fast, they thought there might have been damage. She was spent a good week in there, then she spent another week in rehab, she's back home. And I just couldn't be there. Along with that, I read in, I think it was Rocket Courier here a while ago, Guthrie Hospital is working with schools to get kids to go into EMT programs, and if I remember reading it right, they will pay, and we need EMS in this county so bad.